To all the members of the town council regularly meeting of the mayor and board's election. At this time we stand for our invocation, followed by our faceful meeting. We ask all this in the precious name of Jesus.
Amen. To the United States of America, into the Republic where we stand as one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next we have our roll call. Councilwoman Linda Bosie, District 1, proudly present. Councilwoman Michael J. Weg, District 2.
Present.
Councilwoman Dawn McCann, District 3. That the record reflect, Councilwoman Dawn is not present. Councilwoman Corlette Sanford, District 4.
Present.
Councilwoman Patricia Vicki, District 5.
Present.
Also we have present our Chief Police, Chief Mills, Attorney Marcus Patillo, Lee Wells, and Walter Young of Public Works, decent Boston Town attorney, and the official journal of the town of Homer, Haynesville News, Jack Robinson. Next we have a motion to approve minutes, April 4th, I'm sorry, February 4th or February 11th.
Certainly.
Moved as second by Councilwoman Bosie, second by Councilman Weg, all in favor to state by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none, so any motion given. At this time we'll be addressed by our city attorney.
For those of you that were here on this past Saturday, it turned into a public comment more about being a pepperlou. We want to make sure that what goes on here today is a certain amount of the form, that everybody understands that you are, once you make your public comment, making a comment. Not here to make a statement, not a level of stance, just to try and put the best foot of the town home forward. With that said, we'll start the public comments, state your name and your address, we only have three minutes to speak.
Thank you. My name is Benny Holyfield, I reside at 812 Union Street, Homer, Louisiana, 1740 zip code. On the February 11th, the town had a special call meeting, and after the special call meeting, myself and another town official and a person that works in the town was outside holding conversation. And at that time, Officer Van McDaniel began to pace back and forth behind us, and then after he made his last pace, he turned around and come back over where we was talking and conversating, and he stood there for a brief couple of seconds or whatever, and then he said, "Excuse me," and he began to state my name, Benny Holyfield, began to make threats that he was going to do bodily harm to me. He said that he had been willing to do this for a long time, and he continued making verbal threats and stating that this police uniform doesn't mean anything, and that he will deal with me. So, the two people witnesses were standing there, they advised him that he was still in police uniform and he was asked to leave, and he refused to leave, stating that he was a police officer and he didn't have to go anywhere. So he continued, began to get belligerent and hostile while getting to unzip his jacket and kind of come towards me in a threatening manner, and beginning to, you know, begin to get hostile. So at that time, the two people that were standing there actually had to literally physically grab him by both arms, cuff like, and walk him towards the police department. He continued to kind of force his way back towards me, continued to threaten to do bodily harm. So at this time, I asked the attorney, the town councilman, to open up an investigation, and I'd be able to get back with me in a timely manner and to go from there, to let me know where I need to go from there, to see, give the town the opportunity to act, and I ask y'all to consider it, if the town has a copy of that, thank you.
Either there are no more public comments?
Yes ma'am.
Next we have...
I do. Is there some reason there's no microphone? We can't hear what y'all are saying.
My turn. My name's Ronnie Anderson, 212 Dawson Street. First I'd like to say, I need to have Michael Weg for saying that he's been serving illegally as a town council member for six years, he knows that he needs to reimburse the town for his hate that he got. Secondly, I think the attorney that y'all are using, Mr. Patillo, is gravely incompetent, he should have advised y'all that y'all were doing stuff illegally. Today alone, he's probably cost the town of Homer and citizens, probably cost them twenty thousand dollars because of his incompetence. Because he let this lawsuit with Russell Mills filed against the town, and the judge ordered today that Russell's going to be able to recoup the attorney's fees for almost forty-five hundred dollars, plus the part that y'all paying Tom Arsenal, ten thousand dollars, plus paying Patillo, plus the court costs, twenty thousand dollars is a lot of money, and that's probably the closest to what it's going to cost. Because Mr. Patillo doesn't know what he's doing, he's incompetent, because he didn't advise you what y'all were doing was illegal. And that's why we're in the bind we are right now. If he'd advised you properly, you wouldn't be here. Secondly, I think the people of the town of Homer would rather have a good police department, rather than have an overstaffed in the town of Homer City Hall like you're doing now. You've got three times as many people up here as what they used to run the city hall on, several years ago when they were having to hand input, all the agents type all the checks, now we've got computers, you've got ten employees up here severely overpaid. We'd rather have that money go to the police department, we're more worried about our protection than we are providing jobs for friends and family. So y'all caused a lot of harm by doing these things illegally, and that's why we're in the bind we are. Look, we all got to live together, I agree with what Willie Curry said several years ago, in Homer, we don't need to do the white thing, we don't need to do the black thing, we need to do the right thing. We need to help each other. Y'all are the biggest responsibility, and we trust you do it right, but with that comes tremendous responsibility and something that goes with it, you need to do it right, and we expect y'all to do it right, we hope you will. But, the way you're going about it, you don't have any plan, you're going to shut down the police department because of the cost, but you're running up the cost right here in the city office, and you're not worried about it, and you don't have a plan. To fail the plan is the plan itself. Y'all don't know what's going to happen, just hope the head city of Homer is going to be okay, or you're just going to shut the police office down, and, you know, may God help you. You know, and like the judge pointed out today, Judge T., y'all need to do something. You think you're going to save money on the sheriff's office, y'all don't even know what it's going to cost. Like you said today, down in Jonesburg, it's probably going to cost more for the sheriff's office, the police Jonesburg, than what the police force was. So you don't know what the costs are, might be costing taxpayers a lot more money, you hadn't done any planning, nothing done properly, and it's all done illegally. And I'm going to leave with one statement, what's happened here in Homer, the same thing happened to Pearl Harbor when the commander of the fleet, Japanese fleet, radioed back to telecommunicated back to the Emperor Japan, he said, "We have not decided to fix this." I'm going to finish up. I'm going to finish up. He said, "We have decided to fix this, and we have awakened a sleeping giant, the building was a terrible result, you have awakened a sleeping giant, and we got terrible results."
Last couple of meetings that we had. Last couple of meetings that we had. Everybody said, everything there, about everything. They threw rocks, they threw stones, they threw everything that they could up there. Talking about what the mayor is doing. Let's throw some more stones today, let's talk about the cesspool spending that got us in this situation today, let's talk about the budget at the police department. If we don't talk about something, let's talk about what's got us in this situation today. Let's talk about the cesspool spending that the police department had to be doing. It's quiet, nobody want to say a thing? Nobody want to say a thing now? Let's talk about it. That's what got us in this situation, that cesspool spending that the police department had to be doing. Nobody want to talk. Saturday the room was buzzing. Why not today? Until we put this, yes I'm a minister, for y'all don't know, until we put God in everything we do, that's why I brought today, because every meeting I've been to, I hear one word said about God. Until we put him back into what's thrown on, whether it's the police department, whether it's the city council, whether it's the sheriff, whoever's going to run it, it always going to be run. It's, we need to stop throwing stones and put God first, that's all I got to say.
My name is Marie Johnson, my address is 1310 Adams Street, Homer, Louisiana. I started off going to try to serve as liaison for downtown and the community. Right now, I'm truly offended, I'm insulted, but I would like to know what's the procedure when you get a complaint against the police, when you're fighting, for at least listening to us. You know, the three on this, well, you were, but these two right here are the only ones that have consistently listened to who was standing over here and what they had to say. Up until today, I was strapping the fist, I was trying to understand from both perspectives, but when I tried to hand the mayor a copy of the complaints and concerns in the community, and she said, I said, "You don't want it?" She said, "No." So now I've made my decision right now, I have not signed a recall. There's a level of professionalism that everybody deserves, and as far as Van McDaniel, I've never seen him act out of character, but... You follow your policy, you teach your man, you do whatever you plan on doing. That's why I had a problem with the office said of this, because it wasn't, it wasn't following the way it's supposed to be following, and if you're familiar with the five oh one C three standards, you would have known you weren't following, and that's what made me angry. It's not the destination, people, it's the journey to the destination. If you feel like that department has been disobeying, you should have took another method, because you had to go back and re-camp anyway. And as far as Van, my hat's off to you, and I thank each and every one of you all, for the respect you show me in the community, but the stars is warm, the weather is great, thank you.
Hi. I'm Reverend John Markley. I've lived in this town fourteen years, I came here from Houston, Texas. I live at 1100 North Main. We have a problem in our town, and that problem of a town is leadership. Every person in this room that's ever had a job has worked for a company or an organization that has leadership, and any successful company includes the input of all the people in the company. Now if we have a problem with the mayor, which we do, and the city council, which we do, I do not believe they are qualified for the positions that they hold, but they were elected. So we put them in. Half the people voted them in. But we need to either recall them, get with the chief, the other city leaders, men and women of leadership in this city, there's businessmen and businesswomen in this city, get together and decide how we're going to run this city and get the budgets in order. Now I only have so much money coming in my house, and when the money reduces, so does the cell phone, and then so does the internet, and then so does my trips to Dallas. As a city, we need to have call all the leaders together, under two, it is fixed, so people will move to this town. Our children, our children do not wait to leave this town. In May, we will lose a hundred and sixty-some residents of this town when they graduate to high schools. The kids from Clayver Parish, Homer High, Summerfield, Haynesville, they're just chomping at the bit, their cars are in idle, the tanks are full, and their bags are packed, and they get their diploma, and the next thing you know, they're in Dallas. We want our kids, grandkids, to come back, and they only come back for Christmas and Thanksgiving. We want them to stay, and as a businessman, I ran the largest landfill in the world in Kettleman City, California. And that's what we would do, we had a budget, everybody came together, had their input, and when it was finalized, everybody agreed to what it was, and then we lived with it. And if there was an exception, then we went back to the people and said, "People, we need to get another fifty thousand dollars for the police department, or for the water department, and then to get that, we're going to have to raise your taxes on your house another ten dollars a year. We have to pay for it, but let's do it reasonably, let's get this city council straightened around or removed." I cannot imagine...
My name is Susan Herring, I live at 231 North Main, Homer, Louisiana. I serve a God that is a God of unity, not a God of division. This town needs unity worse than it needs anything, and this is serving to create more division. You can blame the budget if you want to, but I've served on this town council for eight years, during that time, we had a pretty major issue that came before, they were wanting us to give the hospital away to the parish. I said then, that I serve this community. If you put it before a referendum vote, and this community says, "We want to give the hospital away," then I will vote for it. Before that, I will not vote for it. As a councilperson, I feel like I sat in a position of service, service to those who elected me, service to this entire community. Even to the ones that didn't elect me, I served them too. That is what this council is supposed to do, serve you. When this came up, that we had an issue as important as a Homer police department that is going to directly affect every resident of this town, every business owner of this town, that is going to put them in a position, and many of them spoke Saturday, that they have got businesses, one is going to maybe leave because his insurance is going up five thousand dollars. When business owners leave this community, where do you think the revenue comes from the sales tax in the office that we have the budget? The budget is going to get worse when people move out. I even had a person tell me they would not buy another thing in the town of Homer, right now with the things that are going on. That's going to hurt businesses, that's going to hurt sales tax collections, that's going to come right back to the town that serves us. The way to have handled this properly, to have avoided this, was to have held a meeting like this, "We got a problem, we're having trouble with the budget." That's been a very big...
Hi there. My name's Buddy Ventura, I live at 409 North 4th Street. I own a business here in town, I've been here for thirty years, hadn't paid any traffic tickets, hadn't been arrested, under arrest, hadn't been in a fight. I got a water meter at Tobika, ain't been read in six months. See the water meter? If there wasn't as much distance and driving around and taking vacations, if somebody were getting that truck with them guys to read the meter, we might have a better water system.
Mayor Smith? Pat Lawson, I'm sorry. I'm a business owner here in Homer. I live on 326 Methodist Camp Road, Homer, Louisiana. 326 Methodist Camp Road. General projected budget items for the town of Homer, January through December of 2010, total travel, seven thousand five hundred and fifty-four dollars. General 2012 projected budget for the town of Homer, travel, seventeen thousand six hundred and thirty-five dollars. 2012 general approved budget, January to September of 2012, thirty thousand eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars. Just numbers. Recreation, January through November of 2011, from the projected budget of the town of Homer, eleven thousand five hundred dollars for recreation salary. From the town of Homer Recreation, 2013 approved budget for nine months of 2012, thirty-two thousand eight hundred ninety-seven dollars and twenty-three cents. Travel expense form for Mayor Alicia Smith on November 2nd, 2011. You were invited to a customer appreciation day, I guess Homer's a customer, Louisiana Northwest Railroad. You were invited to a customer appreciation day on Wednesday, November 2nd, for cocktails and dinner at the Magnolia Country Club, which is approximately seventeen miles from Haynesville, thirty miles from Homer. You went to this cocktail dinner, which was served at 6:00 PM, you arrived and you attended it, but I guess it was too far to go back to Homer or Haynesville where your husband resides, so you decided to charge Homer for a night at Holiday Inn Suites in Magnolia, Arkansas, which is seven and a half miles the wrong way from Haynesville or Homer, charging the town of Haynesville or Homer a hundred and twenty-four dollars and ninety-five cents. Also on that, you were giving, you were a club reward participant for points earned for this stay at Holiday Inn. Those are dollar values. Points are considered dollar values. I'm not pointing fingers, but it's right here, and if we have a budget issue, why can't we cut the budget in some places to make sure that we have the protection? I'm not saying I'm against anything, I'm just saying if the numbers are saying that we're misusing funds, we need to support our police department, whether it goes to the sheriff's office, or whether it stays right here with Chief Mills. But I think we deserve a right as citizens in Homer to know that our money is not being spent frivolously. And I do appreciate the eye contact, I really do. But I just, I appreciate everything, I appreciate you hearing us, and I have more of this if we need to. Thank you.
My name is Pastor Woodrow Davis. I pastor the Spring Lake Church of God in Christ. Listen, Spring Lake Church of God in Christ, not the Spring Lake Church. When I was accused, when my church was accused of improvising, or using this particular center illegally, God takes offense to it, because I have receipts showing what I did using. Let me take a second. Is the councilor really doing anything wrong?
Yeah.
Let me finish, I don't need your comments right now, then you can make your comments out. I retired from General Motors. General Motors had a problem with the union coming in, because of, there's a word called "culture change." And I realize, Homer, this is a culture change for you. This is a culture change for Homer. Number one, you say it's not a black thing or a white thing. It shouldn't be. It should be, the town of Homer should have said, "All right, police department, we got some, we got some complaints with you." You should have been united and said, "We got some improvises against you, police chief, you over budget, you got lawsuits, all right, let's get this thing fixed." I don't think it was never the intent of the council to get rid of the police chief, I think you need protection. But, you know for yourself, you businessmen that are in here, if you got someone that's not doing right on your job, then your leadership's in, you're going to die. You know you're going to die. You know you're going to do it. So why are we going to blow this thing up like the council is doing so bad, when you know they did the best they can? All right, they may have stepped out of their bounds, they've done the jury, they've reinstated them like that. What to say, let's recall and all like this? Yeah, this is first, the first to have a black woman mayor, a black president, yeah! I'm not about it. You don't applaud for no, it's not a black or white, because she's a white mayor, if she's done a good job, infrastructure around it, how did y'all, did y'all have these kind of meetings when you had Mr. Dean? Let me tell you something, if we don't, if we're friends, we don't have to help him, you can't see color, and I know God, but I see color. We can't see color. You know what? And you can't go to heaven, it's just our idiot.
All I know, I have a tough problem, but it's good to see all of you here. It shows you have a concern for the welfare of our town. My name is B. Stewart Griffin, 899 Coles Street, Homer, Louisiana. I think if we want to look to where and how to solve the problem, let's talk about some ways to unite from here, move the town forward. See, really, the mayor and the town council are not really important people. The position they hold to serve the people of the town of Homer and the citizens are the persons who are part of here. The chief of police and his officers, the person holding those positions is not important, but the duty that they serve to the people is what's important. Now, if we step back from day one, this may not have been Chief Mills' choice of elected mayor. This may not have been Alicia Smith's choice of police chief. But whoever extended a hand of cooperation to each other is what it's all about. The attitude of cooperation, your man won, you won. Let's put our heads together and move the town of Homer forward. Now I'm going to close with this, now every believer in here, bow your heads. I have a word to pray, that if I'm offending someone, you may leave, if you're not a believer. O heavenly Father, we do honestly pray that you will correct what has been wrong. We pray that you will work on our elected officials and their attitude toward each other. You control the universe, and we pray that we will find cooperation in the midst of confusion. And we pray that if one is on the wrong road, that you will correct their pathway. And we pray that this town will move toward a blessing, and the people here may see your good words as our prayer.
Amen.
Next we have old business, which we have none, under new business. Item A was introduced... Item A was introduced on Saturday.
With regards to item A, at this time, with all the people here, we're gonna table this on. We're gonna provide the town with opportunity to actually see if they're gonna show the goodwill, which they said they wanna do, and if they wanna look at the budgets and look at the actual numbers. We're gonna give you plenty of time to do that. We're gonna take into consideration all the comments that have been made, and hopefully from this, best put of Homer will be put forth. We will find out if your actions are truly true, and if you have something contrary to what you've stated, that will also come out. Thank you.
Next, under item B, is an engagement, a special counsel to advise the town of Homer about police department budget and personnel issues, including the span of the police department, the dismissal officer, pay for town marshal police, alternate law enforcement option for the town.
Once again, with item B, we're gonna table that at this time also. We're gonna provide you with opportunity again to actually see if it's what you wanna do. You got your opportunity to make many statements tonight, and we're gonna find out what's true once again. Thank you.
Item C, introduction of orders 139004, authorizing issues of $3,500,000 of taxable utility revenues of the town of Homer. Item C is the $3.5 million that was approved at bond commission earlier this month. $2.5 million is for the sewer lines and drainage and manholes in the town of Homer that haven't been replaced since, some of them since the early 60s and 70s. So we moved forward to get those lines replaced, and the council, the staff here in the town of Homer office have worked diligently to receive $2.5 million. And on one of my trips I took, I was blessed enough to receive one million of that three. So now it's down to $1.5 million, being financed at .95%. And the other million dollars will be free for the town of Homer. The additional $900,000 was the first request we received. This is all combined to be $3.5 million. The additional $900,000 was requested for electronic waterbeams, upon which, if you have a leak in your home, we would know it instantly. So your water bill won't be, won't go to a monstrous price at the end of the month. Soon as you have a leak, be able to go in our office and we can notify you and save on repairs. We're in negotiations now to reduce that price by at least $300,000. So that will save the town more money. We can use that additional funding for water lines. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to introduce this orders 13904 to pursue these projects for the town of Homer.
I still move?
Moved by Councilwoman Wade, second by Councilwoman Ozzy. If all in favor, state by saying aye. Any opposed? If none, so the motion carries. Additionally, I have two other, three other projects that we have been working with. In January, we received $150,000 to repair the roofs on city hall and all the additional surrounding buildings. I don't think this roof has been repaired since it's been here. But you had to take all the clay, we had to take all the clay tiles off and repair all the decks. I think it has been patched, but it hasn't been taken off as a whole and put back on as a whole. And so that's why it's leaking everywhere. So we applied for $150,000 to take every tile off, redeck it, and put it back on, including the police department building and the chambers. In this grant, we also applied for another $450,000, which would move our council chambers down where the old fire station is, which is right behind you where the chairs are stored. This is gonna take about probably three or four years. We have been working diligently with Representative Captain Jeffersons, along with Santa's Waldorfors, trying to complete these projects. Also, we applied for money for L-GAP and C-WEP projects. We have a tank that's been at the Joe Michael Park. I know you, everybody knows that tank that is rusty. We've been diligently trying, the council and I, and the grant committee have diligently tried for the last two years to get that tank removed. Looked like that might happen this year. I think we're gonna get approved of that grant, return all necessary paperwork in. You haven't got, you got your word back in the dictionary, back there or something? So we'll be able to remove that tank because that is in violation, and also be able to repair the tank that's there, that should've been repaired about five or six years ago. So all these are ongoing projects, and I have a list of about 16 more, for anybody that's interested in this document. We have some readily available. And that concludes the mayor's report. We have no need to go into executive session, but Councilwoman Ozzy could like to say something before we adjourn?
I'd say I want to say something because it's really good to see this many people here. You know, it's really unfortunate that some of you here are not necessarily here for a positive reason, but out of every negative, something positive transpires. And I think out of these last few weeks, something positive has transpired, and hopefully all of us are committed to doing a better job for the town of Homer, from the mayor to the council to the police department. I have heard all of one side of the issue for the last two weeks. Very few people have come to me as a councilperson to ask me what was going on. That tells me that most of you didn't really know what was going on, you wanted to believe what it was, that you wanted to believe. But it is my prayer that, starting tonight, that we will start to work together. When this council makes a decision towards the police department, we have done everything that we could do in an attempt to work for the Homer Police Department. Now, most of you are not concerned about that, but that's the fact. Now, if you wanna print something, print the fact. We have been over the back of the Homer Police Department. That's facts. But from all the meetings that I've heard and all the comments that I've heard, a lot of you are not concerned about the facts. I hope that tonight, the ones of you who are concerned, will make a concerted effort to make this a better town, starting with us and with the police department and with
Am I gonna take a moment to adjourn?
I still want to.
Moved by Councilwoman Wade, second by Councilwoman...